Alderman Lazara?
Here.
Alderman Shawkey?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor Police?
Here. Coram present, please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every gene and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of the city council meeting April 25, 2013.
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I just want to thank the two aldermen that are going out this evening for their years of service, Alderman Shawkey, Alderman Coles, and Treasurer Marsha Camaras for filling in for us. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned. Like to introduce, you want to make the introduction? One opposed. Go ahead. Mr. Biden.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will start the new council term, and in order to do that, there's two requirements. One, the individuals must be duly certified to be elected. That part of the equation has been accomplished. The second part is that they must be sworn and administered the oath of office. We have the good fortune this evening to have the Honorable Kenneth Popejoy. He's a circuit court judge here in DuPage County, a judge of tremendous distinction. The city council has seen him before. Some of you may remember him. He had some running experience back in this area many, many years ago, a few gray hairs ago. But he's also, as more recently, been here and sworn in the number of the city council and elected officials. So we're pleased to have him return at the request of our, some of our councilmen. He's come back, so we are grateful for his service here. We appreciate him taking time out of his busy schedule and his trial call, which is very, very hectic, to be able to share this moment and swear the individual in so they can get started with their terms of office. So I'd like to introduce to you all, and please give them a warm Wooddale welcome, Judge Kenneth Popejoy. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and staff, I'm very honored to be here. And you know, it's a special moment to swear someone in, as I go back to the time when I was first sworn in as a public servant. And it humbles you. You're in awe of it. You're a little scared of the responsibilities, but you're also very excited to pursue them. I've got a rich history with Wooddale. Some of you may remember the name of Jim Spivey. He was a three-time Olympian from Pitton High School. I was his coach. I was his Olympic coach, traveled the Olympic teams with him when I liked him. And I love this little gem of DuPage County. I've lived in DuPage County my entire 62 years. And Wooddale, Wooddale is a great little spot. It's just gorgeous, fun, warm, great people. And I wouldn't be on the bench without the support of the people of Wooddale. So thank you very much for having me here. And if I could please have Sandra O'Butch come forward. Pleasure. Hi, Sandra O'Butch.
Hi.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The ordinances, resolutions, and code for the city of Wooddale.
The ordinances?
Resolutions.
Resolutions.
And codes.
And codes of the city of Wooddale.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of treasurer.
Of the office of treasurer.
For the city of Wooddale. Peter Jacob.
Aye.
Peter A. Jacob.
Aye, Peter A. Jacob.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances, resolutions, and code.
And the ordinances, resolutions, and code.
For the city of Wooddale.
For the city of Wooddale.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Ward One Alderman.
Of the office of Ward One Alderman.
For the city of Wooddale.
For the city of Wooddale.
According to the dust by bill.
According to the dust by bill.
Roy Wesley.
Word by word? This man has did so much for me, helped me be elected as a judge, so much of the legwork and the dirty work and the work. And I'm very honored for everything he did for me. I wouldn't be in this world without him. To be here today, to be here with his brother and his beautiful mom here with us, I feel young and be here with the Wesley family.
May I raise your hand if I can? Aye, Roy Wesley.
Aye, Roy Wesley.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The ordinances, resolutions, and code.
The ordinances, resolutions, and code.
For the city of Wooddale.
For the city of Wooddale.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Ward Two Alderman.
Of the office of Ward Two Alderman.
For the city of Wooddale.
For the city of Wooddale.
According to the dust by bill. I think it was four years ago I sworn this brother. Now I have a brother team again. I've never had any other brother team in all my years.
So it's a very good honor here.
Aye, Antonio Catalano. No! Well, I took you out of order. That's why you're looking at me funny.
I'm sorry.
But yeah, I'm done. Come on back here. Oh, judges, do I have to? That's it, okay. Aye, Eugene Wesley.
Aye, Eugene Wesley.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The ordinances, resolutions, and code.
Orders, resolutions, and codes.
For the city of Wooddale.
For the city of Wooddale.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Ward Four Alderman.
Of the officer of mayor, I mean, of ward.
I'm glad you got a touch up. For the city of Wooddale.
For the city of Wooddale.
According to the dust by bill.
According to the dust by bill.
Boy, we did an awesome job on that. Right here. Yeah, it is. Okay, Antonino Catalano. How are you, Judge? Please raise your hand. Aye, Antonino Catalano.
Aye, Antonino Catalano.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances, laws, and code for the city of Wooddale.
And the ordinances, and codes, and laws for the city of Wooddale.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Ward Three Alderman.
Of the office of Ward Three Alderman.
For the city of Wooddale.
City of Wooddale.
According to the dust by bill.
According to the dust by bill.
Congratulations.
Your judge. Thank you, thank you. Now we'll take a little recess and have some coffee and cake.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Lazara?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
I'm here.
Good. Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor Police?
Here. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Have no written communiques. Under Mayor's report, Municipal Clerk Week, Clerk's Week proclamation. The office of municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of the local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organization, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Anunziato Police, Mayor, City of Wooddale, Wooddale, Illinois, do recognize the week of May 5th through May 11th as Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk Shirley J. Seibert, and all, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent, dated the second day of May 2013. Next. I'll just, I'll go over there for the Boy Scouts. Next, we have a proclamation for the Boy Scouts. This is a proclamation for the Boy Scouts of America, Troop 65, Emergency Sandbag Deployment, April 17th through 19th, 2013. Whereas the city of Wooddale seeks to honor and thank the Boy Scouts of America, Troop 65, for their service to the city of Wooddale and to assist with sandbag deployment for the April 2013 flood event, and whereas the volunteering, once-time, and resources has been an integral part of our community, and it is essential that we continue this tradition to improve the quality of life for all citizens in our city, and whereas the Boy Scouts of America is a vital force in the development of our youth through its many programs which encourage the ability of its members to do things for themselves and especially for others. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Wooddale, DuPage County, Illinois, as follows, that we thank the Boy Scouts of America, Troop 65, for their service to the city of Wooddale. Thank you. Now we also have a certificate here from the staff thanking them for all their work. As I call you up, please come up. Josh Beer. Phil Espinoza.
Not here, not here.
Richard Franzen.
Not here, Mayor.
Jeff Chakowsky. Josh Chakowsky. Zach Chakowsky. Not here. Any more brothers? Arthur Kowalkowski. Brandon Martin. Sam Nearing. Randy Petterback. Not here. Greg Wagner. That's a big boy. He's big. Andrew Wellmers. Thank you. Give him a big round of applause. Thanks, guys. Somebody want to say a few words? Somebody want to speak?
Mayor, could I have a floor for a minute?
Sure can.
I really, you know what, in the past storms that we have had in this committee, every time we had a flooding incident, this group has always came to the city and helped us out. It's not just this one we recognizing for. We, we recognizing for all their dedication that they have done to every flood in this community, that they are always on board whenever we need them. And I thank you from bottom of my heart, and the citizens of this Wooddale, thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your hard work and all that. I also like to give special thanks to also the leaders that train these people and been commanders of, of Cub Scouts here, or Boy Scouts here, so I would like to recognize them too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. She wants to take a picture, Roy. Hold on one second.
Turn around here.
I don't mean to crack.
Ready?
It's okay.
Okay, we're having a couple now? Can we get the, all the leaders here? What is that guy that's left? He's the dad of all those Chicago.
Hold on, hold on, guys. Don't, don't walk away. Alderman Roy Wesley, you got a comment?
Mr. Mayor, could you make sure that we get this in the newsletter for the work that they did? And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to, for $500 for the Boy Scouts so they could use it for their...
Upcoming trip?
For canoes or whatever. Maybe the leader wants to say what they're trying to raise money for, or...
Somebody want to step up? You want to come into the mic? Go ahead, right here. You have to. That's okay.
We, we have some announcements. I'm kidding. You guys are supposed to... Actually, one of our, we have two canoe trailers. They each hold six canoes, and one of them, the axle is, is completely shot, so we're in the, the market for a new canoe trailer. So we could definitely use some, some help with that.
So...
Greatly appreciated.
$500 would be a good start, I think, so...
Outstanding.
Thank you for your help. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. We had a motion in a second. Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Thank you, guys, and if you could, I'm sure the council would like to shake your hands. Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize...
How do you get that off?
An Eagle Scout, Gregory R. Wagner. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America is a vital force in the development of our youth through its many programs which encourage the ability of its members to do things for themselves and especially for others, whereas one of the major objectives in the scouting program is to develop citizenship through community involvement, and in addition to working for citizenship, merit badges, scouts are encouraged to participate in community service projects, and whereas Gregory R. Wagner is a member of the Boy Scouts of America and has not only proven himself to be an outstanding member, but has attained the highest honor bestowed on a scout, the Eagle Scout Award, and whereas the Eagle Scout Award is a distinction that will follow him throughout life and will be a beacon to others of the leadership quality and commitment this young man has shown. Now therefore, I, Mayor Anunziato Police, recognize Gregory R. Wagner as worthy of this highest honor and encourage him to continuous commitments to excellence. Gregory, would you like to come up? Thanks, John. I'll call the police chief up. He'd like to present an award. And just so you know, it's one in five million, I believe, become Eagle Scouts, so it's not an easy task.
Just wanted to recognize Greg's achievements today. You know, in our line of work, sometimes we're always looking for those that are willing to go above and beyond to become good citizens and show leadership, and I know the Eagle Scout Award, we have several within our ranks, and you know, you've not only done what is required to get through, you've gone above and beyond, and we appreciate that, and thanks for your dedication to the community, and I'm sure as, you'll have high goals for yourself, and you'll probably achieve those because of the work you've done just to get here. So anyways, congratulations from us to, from the police department with this certificate of achievement. Thank you.
Just so everybody knows, Greg had to fulfill a project to become an Eagle Scout, and he's going to talk to us about it right now.
Okay. Well, Mrs. Skarzinski came to me and asked me about a project that they had to do. It was the front of the Oakbrook School. Their little area in the front with the flowers and everything was kind of worn down, so she asked me to take all the mulch out and put new plants in and along the front of the school to like get everything like looking better. So I did that with the help of a lot of people, and I would like to thank them a lot.
I think we need a motion to recognize...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call Marsha Camaras up. We have a resolution expressing appreciation for services extended by Marsha Camaras to the city of Wooddale, whereas Marsha Camaras has devoted her experience, knowledge, and dedication while serving an appointed office as treasurer of the city of Wooddale from September 6, 2012, to May 2, 2013, and whereas Marsha Camaras assisted with the finance department in balancing the fiscal year 2014 budget and suggesting and providing revisions and clarifications in the narrative sections of fiscal year 2014 budget, and whereas Marsha Camaras was proactive in reviewing billing for professional services and questioning discrepancies, and whereas Marsha Camaras serves as the president of Wooddale Senior Club, the senior club offers many fun activities such as guest speakers, entertainment, bingo, door prizes, blood pressure testing, discussion of community issues, and opportunity to socialize with friends, and whereas the quality of life for citizens of the city of Wooddale has been greatly enhanced by the knowledge, experience, and dedication of Marsha Camaras, and whereas the residents of the city of Wooddale are deeply indebted to Marsha Camaras for her distinguished service to the city, and whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Wooddale desire to express Marsha Camaras their gratitude to her for her distinguished and dedicated service to the city. Now therefore, being resolved by the city council, I need a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. At this resolution, the mayor and the city council of the city of Wooddale expressed to Marsha Camaras for her devotion, knowledge, expertise, and constructive service as treasurer of the city of Wooddale. Thank you, Marsha, and thank you for stepping in when we had that void. Thank you.
I just, it was a pleasure working with all of you, and if you ever need me, I'm available.
Next, I'd like to have former Alderman Joe Coles come up, please. I have a resolution expressing appreciation for services extended by Joseph Coles to the city of Wooddale, whereas Joseph Coles has devoted his experience, knowledge, and dedication while serving in elective office in the city of Wooddale as Alderman of the First Ward for 12 years from May 3 through 2001 through May 2, 2013, whereas Joe Coles served unselfishly and diligently over the years on the city council standing committees, including terms as chairman of public health and safety and judiciary committee, and whereas Joe Coles served as vice chair for Clean Air Accounts Committee, which aims to protect and sustain and improve a clean and healthful environment to benefit present and future generations, and whereas Joseph Coles served as a member of the Stormwater Commission, which aims to minimize potential losses due to periodic flooding, including loss of life, loss of property, health, and safety hazards, disruption of commerce and governmental services, extraordinary public expenditures for flood... for flood protection and relief and impairment of the tax base, all of which adversely affect the public health, safety, and general welfare and to preserve and enhance the quality of surface waters, conserve economic and natural values, and provide for the wise utilization of water and related land resources. And whereas Joseph Coles was an advocate of the Wooddale Police Department K-9 unit. And whereas the quality of life for citizens of the city of Wooddale have been greatly enhanced by the knowledge, experience, and dedication of Joseph Coles. And whereas Joseph Coles has served the needs of the citizens of Wooddale by spending many hours meeting and conferring with the citizens of First Ward in a manner that was nonpartisan and based on what was best for the community. And whereas the residents of the city of Wooddale are deeply indebted to Joseph Coles for his distinguished service for the city for 12 years. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Wooddale desire to express Joseph Coles their gratitude to him for his distinguished and dedicated service to the city. And I'd like to give you a special thank you, Joe. Thank you.
Well, I was a private citizen when I started this 12 years ago, and now I'm a private citizen again. So all I got to say is, I'll be around. I live on Montclair. I've been there 42 years, and I'll still be there. Anytime that anybody needs something, all they have to do is call me, and I'll gladly help anybody that I can, especially in the city of Wooddale. Thank you.
Like to make a comment, Alderman Wesley?
Yes. Mr. Joe Coles, before you leave, I'd like to make a few comments here. Years ago, when I was first running for office up here, I remember one thing that Joe always told me. I was scared to go to the Daily Herald, and I will remember that. Joe says, "Come on with me. We'll go to Daily Herald and speak to the editors and, you know, don't be afraid. Speak to them." And you know what? Speak your mind. And I will never forget that when I first came on office here, that Joe gave me that leadership. And Joe has always been a dedicated city alderman in this city. So Joe, I want to thank you for the years of service that you have gave me to show what the alderman position is to serve as this committee. So on my behalf, I'd like to thank you for giving me the honor of filling under your leadership in the past years that you've been here. Thank you.
I'd like to call Alderman Shockey up. A resolution expressing the appreciation for services extended by Daniel Shockey to the city of Wooddale. Whereas Daniel Shockey has devoted his experience, knowledge, and dedication while serving an elective office in the city of Wooddale as alderman of the Third Ward for 18 years from May 4, 1995, to May 2, 2013. And whereas Daniel Shockey served unselfishly and diligently over the years on the city council's standing committees, including terms as chairman of finance administration, chairman of planning and zoning, building committee, chairman of public health and safety and judiciary, and chairman of public works committee. It's a long list. Whereas Daniel Shockey served as mayor pro temp under Mayor Ken Johnson. And whereas Daniel Shockey strived and succeeded in maintaining the city of Wooddale maintained a balanced budget during his tenure. And whereas Daniel Shockey served as a member of the Stormwater Commission, which aims to minimize potential losses due to periodic flooding, including loss of life, loss of property, health, and safety standards, disruption of commerce and governmental services, extraordinary public expenditures for flood protection and relief and impairment of the tax bases, all of which adversely affect the public health, safety, and general welfare and to preserve and enhance the quality of surface waters, conserve economic and natural values, and provide for the wise utilization of water and related land resources. And whereas Daniel Shockey served as chairman of the Streetscape and Economic Enhancement Committee, which enhances the quality of life for all that live, work, and visit the city of Wooddale through a comprehensive community forestry landscape and hardscape programs. And whereas Daniel Shockey volunteered at several events, participated in National Night Out and Prairie Fest. Whereas Daniel Shockey is an active member of several organizations, including Seniors and Law Enforcement Together and Wooddale Seniors Club. Whereas the quality of life of our citizens of the city of Wooddale has been greatly enhanced by the knowledge, experience, and dedication of Daniel Shockey. And whereas Daniel Shockey has served the needs of the citizens of Wooddale by spending many hours meeting and conferring with the citizens of the Third Ward in a manner that was nonpartisan and based on what was best for the community. And whereas the residents of the city of Wooddale are deeply indebted to Daniel Shockey for his distinguished service to the city for 18 years. Hey, you've got a long list. I'm sorry. I need a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Wooddale desire to express to Daniel Shockey their gratitude to him for his distinguished and dedicated service, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Wooddale, DuPage County, Illinois. And thank you very much once again for your service.
I just realized why we don't have that many people show up to our meetings. Those seats are really comfortable. These are not. When I was elected or appointed actually as alderman and went up there and sat down, I really was wondering, now what do I do? But I was lucky because I had a number of mentors. One was a former alderman, Ralph Madonna. Another was Ken Johnson at the time an alderman. And through the years, there've been many of the other aldermen that have helped me out and helped me understand what was going on. Let's see, we have Marshals Zubek, for instance. We have Tony Zobeck, who helped out and is still around, too. I would like to though thank or mention that our job up there was to present, what's the word again, policy. That's what we, that's all we're supposed to do, is develop policy for the city. Yet you'll find that every one of the aldermen in the past and all of these aldermen have worked their hearts out in helping citizens wherever they could. For instance, the Wesley brothers. I mean, you can't believe the things that they've done for people in this town. I'd also like to thank Brad Townsend, who wasn't the manager at the time when I started, as well as Jeff Mermuse. Jeff's got an easy job. He's got John Forrest. He's got the chief of police. He's got some Brad Wilson, the finance chairman. He's got some real good people working for him. And I'd like to also thank the guys out in the field. We make the policy, but they're the ones that have to go out there and do the work. And lastly, the person I'd like to thank the most is one that helped me out an awful lot in making decisions. One that spent a lot of time in Wooddale work herself. This lady was on a number of different committees, and she still is, as a matter of fact. And that's my wife. I call her Ronnie. I shouldn't have just said wife. Thank you very, very much for the years. It was enjoyable, tough at times, but I'm so glad I did it. Appreciate it.
Alderman Winger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to mention to Alderman Shockey, it has been a pleasure working with you in the past 10 years that I've been a part of council. I appreciated that time and the work we did together, such as our ward update sessions and our newsletters. I value being united for the residents of Ward 3 throughout that 10 years. And I wish you and your wife, Ronnie, the very best in retirement. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I have a floor.
Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
All right. Dan, we have been, when I lived on Robin Lane, we lived across the street from each other. I respect your decision to step down and give up, you know, step away. But let me tell you one thing. You have taught me on a leadership just like Joe Coles did on this council. When I came on this council several years ago, you took me on the side and says, "We'll get this through, and we'll work together and make the best for the citizens of Wooddale." And he did. We worked together up here for numbers of years on issues and things. And I remember that Dan has always, when I was chairman of finance, when I was chairman of something, he always asked me, "Hey, could you come over here and help him out to know it?" Or he helps me out to know stuff. He was a leader just like Mr. Coles was up here on the dais. So in behalf of me, I would like to thank you for the dedication and welcoming to this council 18 years ago or whatever I came on here. I'd like to thank you for letting me be part of that council with you and took you underneath the leadership. So thank you very much.
Sure. Alderman Roy Wesley, like to make a comment. Go ahead.
Dan, it's been a long time that you've been up here, and the citizens should be very proud of having you up here as alderman. The best, you always looked at the citizens first whenever you made your decisions. And the citizens of Wooddale should be very proud of having you serve as long as you did for the council. And I really appreciate that for the citizens of Wooddale. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, for appointment of mayor pro temp, Alderman Christine Winger. Planning, Zoning, and Building Commission, Chairman Hart Woods. Vice Chair Peter Jacobs. Finance Administration Committee Chairman Mike Sizmarsky. Vice Chair Eugene Wesley. Public Works Committee Chairman Frank Lazara. Vice Chair Tony Catalano. Public Health, Safety, and Judiciary Committee Chairman Roy Wesley. Vice Chair Christine Winger. All right, for the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, I need the advice and consent. Need a motion to reappoint Almer Tekmeyer, three-year term. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
A second.
All, questions? Can I do all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With the advice and consent of the city council, Community Development Commission, reappoint Ralph Madonna, two-year term. Reappoint Georgia A. Schroeder, two-year term. Reappoint Richard Peterson, two-year term. Appoint William Milano, two-year term. And appoint Dave Woods to finish the one-year, unexpired term. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Mr. Mayor?
Second?
Yes, question?
Question. I would ask that these appointments be tabled at this time.
Mayoral appointments are not subject to table. It's a mayor prerogative to make the appointments. It does require, under the city code and statute, the advice and consent. So there is no, it's not a motion subject to be in table.
I thought we could table the zoning board.
Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
The council has the right to vote on those, but because it is a mayoral appointment, the mayor's the only one who can make that appointment. So it's not subject to table. It is subject to vote, and the council has to give its advice and consent or can refuse to give its advice and consent. So you have the right to vote on it, but you don't have the right to table that matter.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
You could do them separately, though. Each say there's, I'm not picking on a person here, but just say there's a person that the council doesn't want, that he wouldn't mention that name, correct?
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, you can either do them in a group for that particular commission, or they can be done individually. The motion on the table is for the entire grouping of those individuals to those positions.
We have a first and a second. Right. Okay, we can do a roll call. Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Abstain.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Abstain.
What happens there? Three to three. Is that a no? Don't you need five votes? Three yeses, three no's. Okay, that fails. Individually. All right, need advice and consent, reappoint Ralph Madonna, two-year term. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Advice and consent, Georgia A. Schroeder. Do I have a motion? Reappoint for two years?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Next, motion to approve, reappoint Richard Peterson, two-year term.
Make that motion.
I make the second it.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Alderman Winger? Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Peterson. Appoint, two-year term, William Milano. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Abstain.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Abstain.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Abstain.
Sorry. Appoint Dave Woods to finish a one-year, unexpired term. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. All right, next, advice and consent, Stormwater Management Committee. Should we do this individually? I'll reappoint Dory Madonna, three-year term. Reappoint Michael Penisneck, three-year term. Appoint Gail Bedard, three-year term. And Alderman Frank Lozaro will be the liaison. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Abstain.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Abstain.
Really?
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Abstain.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Abstain.
Okay, we'll do these individually. Reappoint Dory Madonna for three-year term. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I second the motion.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
That passes. Reappoint Michael Penisneck, three-year term. Motion?
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Abstain.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Abstain.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Abstain.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Abstain.
We've got four abstains. Call me. It's a tie, right? Oh, he don't vote. Four yeses.
I counted four.
Somebody say no?
I didn't think so. I counted four.
Wasn't, that side was all yes, or? Peter was yes. You abstained, Peter? He said yes.
Yeah, it was yes.
It was a yes. Four yeses. Yeah.
Mayor Police?
Yes. Appoint Gail Bedard, three-year term. Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Abstain.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. So, do we need?
I thought it was another.
Last question.
Four, four yeses.
Okay.
Let's count on that one.
Okay. Next. Clean Air Counts. Appoint Chairman Winger as, Christine Winger as chairman, Peter Jacob as vice chair, Chief Vesta for another term, and appoint Stefan Stevek to finish a one-year, unexpired term. Streetscape and Economic Enhancement, Chairman Art Woods, Vice Chair Tony Catalano. Appoint Steve Micus and Julie Vertico. Police Pension Board. Appoint Treasurer Sandra Porch, two-year term. No, no, it doesn't. No. And that concludes the appointments. Okay. Next, City Managers' Report.
Fortunately, we don't have to vote on my report. I've known Marcia for only a handful of years. It's been a pleasure working with her. I knew her before she became treasurer, back from when I met her at the senior club. She's always been very cordial and nice, and makes me feel welcome at the senior club. I definitely will miss working with her. I wish I could have worked with her a lot longer. Aldermen, both Alderman Coles and Alderman Shocky. I'll always remember you guys. I started the city, you were here. It's been eight years. I wish I can get another eight years. No offense to the new, new council members, but there's big shoes to fill. And I've even gone a little gray in the sideburns, working with Joe and Dan. But that's just from age, not from the long meetings we've spent together. But I'll certainly miss them, and on behalf of staff, we certainly enjoyed working with all three of you, and you'll be missed.
Thank you. Consent Agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? I'll entertain a motion to approve. Mayor, I'm. Yes, Alderman Wesley?
May I ask you for item number one be removed at this time?
Second.
Yeah. Right, we'll put under other business. Anything else? Oh, that's it. All right, then I need a motion for item number two. Do we have a motion? Do I have a second?
I second it.
Now, I need a motion to approve final payment, Independent Mechanical Industries, for the booster pumps, number four and five dash one project, in a not-to-exceed of thirty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Make the motion.
Do I have a second? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Next, Community Chairman Reports. Planning and Zoning, Alderman Woods.
I have no report at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Health and Safety, Alderman Roy Wesley.
I don't think we have anything.
No.
No.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Lozara.
I have one thing on my agenda. It's the pay request for number eleven, Maximum Construction Corp., for the north WWTP upgrades, Phase One A project, in the not-to-exceed amount of five hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Wesley.
After our meeting last week, could you tell me, is any of this money got to do what we talked about in exact session? Is liquidated damage on here, or is it not? Or was this a time limit?
Mr. Mermus.
To refresh my memory, make sure the dates are right.
Absolutely not. This is still, predates that discussion.
Thank you.
Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Finance and Administration, Alderman Sizmarski.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under other business, we do have one item. The resolution approving the notice of intent to award to Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated for Phase One B of the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Wesley?
Mr. Mayor, what is the price tag on this, and, or we know?
Mr. Mermus.
This is a process, a series of events and passages that the council needs to move forward on. The price tag is actually going to be determined next week with another motion to approve. This is just starting the intent to award the contract to Williams Brothers. This gets the SRF funding ball rolling. We'll talk more about this next week, but this is the first hurdle that needs to be cleared. You'll get details on the fixed cost next committee meeting.
So, Mr. Mayor, let me ask you this question.